Call the meeting of the McHenry County Zoning Board of Appeals to order. The purpose for our hearing today is petition Z 25-0028. The applicant is GLG Solutions Incorporated. The request is for a B3 general business district to a B3 CV general business district with a conditional use permit for outdoor storage and variances allowing vehicles not owned by the property owner or the tenant to be stored onsite and to use grindings in lieu of pavement. The address is on Illinois Route 20 in Marengo. There are four parcels totaling 10.2 acres on the east side of Illinois Route 20, approximately 1,500 feet south of Church Road in Coral Township. There are four pin numbers associated with this application, 1727-300028, 1727-300026, 1728-40010, and 1728-40012. At this time, I'll have members of the zoning board of appeals introduce themselves in the township in which they reside, starting on my left.
Robert Cozen, Elgonquin Township.
Mary Donard, Greenwood Township.
Charlie Eldridge, Richmond Township.
I'm Lenea Coustre in Alton Township.
Nikki Gardner, Nunda Township.
Kurt Schnabel, Riley Township.
Jessica Beverly Door Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated August 19, 2025, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was August 20, 2025, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was August 14, 2025, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice, and publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing fees have been paid, the endangered species consultation was not required for this petition, and the McHenry County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI L 250084669. Just to go through a little bit of how a hearing proceeds for members of the public, the petitioner will present their case to the board. Then they will be asked questions by the board. Staff might have some questions for them. Then if any member of the public has questions, you'll be allowed to ask your questions. It has to be based on the person's testimony here today. I will allow you each three minutes. At the end of that time, if everyone has asked their questions, again, this is not a time for statements, that will become later in the hearing, but questions, if there's a question that hasn't been asked and answered, then I'll allow you more time. But we'll spread it out with three minutes per person. And then after all the testimony has been given, we'll have the report from the staff, and then if any member of the public has a statement, you will be given three minutes then as well. You'll have to come up and whether you're asking a question or making a statement, come up and identify yourself, enter mailing address, and then you can, as I call on you, you will be allowed to proceed. This is a quasi judicial hearing. This meeting is being recorded. Rules of testimony apply, so anyone that wants to ask a question or make a statement, I will swear you in. So anybody who thinks they'd like to speak during this hearing, I would like to ask you to raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you give today shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, so before we even start, we have, a board member has some questions for staff, and I think I do too, but I'm gonna let Charlie ask the question, so go ahead.
Okay, starting out, is a repair facility the primary use, or is a storage facility the primary use with repair being incidental?
Okay, I'm gonna start out by introducing my staff for the record. So my name is Anna Kersman, and I'm a senior planner. As I understand, the proposal, the repair facility is allowed by right, and that is what they, would be the principal part of it, with this storage being directly associated with the business.
Okay, so then by right, the repair facility may have vehicles incidental to its business, which would be trucks under repair or a day or two before or after they are repaired.
That is correct.
Plus the vehicles owned or leased by the business, which they are using in the course of their business.
That would be correct.
So the only vehicle subject to the conditional use, which we're hearing today, are vehicles that they are allowing to be parked there, presumably for pay, but whether for pay or not, that are not owned by them and are not being repaired by them. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, that's my threshold question.
Sure.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, so the only testimony we really need is regarding the conditional use for the storage, because the business is allowed by right, correct?
So you are accepting testimony on the conditional use for the storage yard and the two variances that go with that?
Okay.
And those variances are for the conditional use aspect of it?
So at this time, we'll turn it over to the GLG Solutions. I would ask you to please identify yourself, and as you give testimony, please identify yourself, so that when this is being recorded, it'll be able to differentiate who is speaking.
Hi, I am Dimitri Sandu. I'm GLG Solutions president, so I own the property, and I'm trying just to build a truck repair facility with parking additional right there, which is directly related to the truck repair shop. And I have my own company, trucking company, which I'm trying to use this facility also will be additional necessary for additional clients for parking and repair.
Elizabeth Piffner, attorney for GLG Solutions, the petitioner in this case, and I believe Mr. Coleman.
Jim Condon, site engineering consultant for the project.
If I may, may I give a brief opening statement for the board?
You just go ahead, but I don't mind.
Again, for the record, Elizabeth Piffner giving her opening statement. Or good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As you are aware, the property made subject of this petition is approximately 10.2 acres of vacant land located on Route 20 in Marengo, Illinois, about a mile and a half away from Hampshire. The subject property is adjacent to property that is actually already zoned for commercial development. There's a heavy industrial asphalt company adjacent to the property, surrounded by B3 properties, and actually situated behind the property that is zoned currently for commercial development is a subdivision. As you are aware, the property currently is zoned for B3 general business. The petitioner is seeking to construct a semi repair shop, which is an allowable use and is consistent with the current zoning of B3. But as you guys have already inquired, the petition before you is relative to a conditional use for the storage and the two variances that were briefly already discussed. One is to allow the storage of vehicles that are not owned or leased by the property owner in conjunction with that business, and the other is to utilize grindings in the storage area in lieu of payment. As part of that repair shop and the basis for the petition that is actually before you this afternoon, the petitioner is requesting that conditional use and those variances to store those semi trucks for short-term purposes while they are in line for repairs or while drivers may be out of town for brief stints on vacation. It's also extremely important to remember when weighing the evidence before you guys this afternoon, that we're not, that we're here only to consider the conditional use as well as the variances as they are requested, and not whether or not my client can actually construct that repair shop and parts warehouse as is allowable under that B3 usage. So if I may, I would like to call as my first witness, Dimitri Sandu.
Yeah.
And you are Dimitri?
Yes, I'm Dimitri Sandu.
Okay, and you are the owner of the property currently located at Route 20, Marengo, Illinois, and made subject of this petition, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that property is currently zoned B3, correct?
Yes, correct.
And again, that closest township is Hampshire, which is approximately one and a half miles away, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
And the property is situated in close proximity to the highway, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you're seeking the conditional use to allow storage on the property, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And that storage would be for semi trucks, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And you are also seeking two variances today, one to allow the storage of those trucks not owned or leased by you on the property, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And the other variance you are seeking is to allow grindings in certain areas in lieu of asphalt in the storage area of the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And obviously, you are seeking to construct that semi truck repair shop and parts warehouse, correct?
Correct, yes.
And in conjunction with that, you want to allow the storage of those semi trucks for short-term storage while in line for repairs and while owners may be on vacation for short term, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And do you believe that the conditional use is compatible with the existing planned development in the area?
Yeah, I think it's correct.
And do you believe that the proposed conditional use and the variances as sought will not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the area, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And do you believe that the conditional use and the variances will substantially diminish or impair property values?
I don't think so.
And do you believe that the conditional use and variances will injure or will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties?
No.
Okay. And to the best of your knowledge, there are adequate utilities, road access, drainage, and other facilities to the property, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you believe that the conditional use and variances conform to the underlying conditions of the B3 zoning district, is that correct?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And you believe that this conditional use and those variances would be in the best interest of public welfare, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And throughout this process, you worked with an engineer to protect any groundwater recharge and quality, correct?
Yes, correct.
And do you, you do not believe that the proposed use will impair adequate light supply, that's correct?
Yeah.
And you don't believe that there will be an increase of fire risk to surrounding owners, correct?
Right, yeah.
The site plan that was submitted, will, that site plan substantially conform to the plan as submitted by your engineer, Mr. Jim Condon's office?
Yes, correct.
And that plan, can you briefly describe what, what the actual repair shop consists of in that plan?
That, we planning to have six bay for repair shop, then another in the middle to be a warehouse for the parts, which will be necessary for the shop, and also next part will be the offices for the personnel, which will have to work in the, I mean, the logistical.
And you're planning on 47 standard parking spots, two handicap spaces, nine bobtail, and roughly 62 trailer spaces, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you've seen the landscape plan that was submitted, correct?
Correct, yes.
And will that landscape plan that was submitted substantially conform to the plan as submitted by J DeVito Design?
Yes.
And you believe that landscape plan conforms with the requirements of the UDO adopted by McHenry County, is that correct?
Yes, it's correct, but if will be necessary any adjustments, so we'll be happy to do that to make it correct.
Okay, and the signage plan that was submitted by Jim Condon's office, you plan to substantially conform that signage plan, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you believe that also conforms to the requirements set forth by the Unified Development Ordinance adopted by McHenry County, is that correct?
That's right.
And the lighting plan that was submitted and prepared by RAB, or RAB as I like to call it, will that lighting plan substantially conform to the plan as prepared by RAB?
Correct.
And you believe that that lighting plan conforms with the requirements as set forth by the Unified Development Ordinance adopted by McHenry County, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, relative to the conditional use, if the conditional use and the variances are denied, are you going to experience a hardship?
Yes, I'll definitely experience a hardship, because the parking is directly related to the shop, so you cannot repair or do something if you don't have parking spots.
And?
And I'll be, I mean, if I don't have parking, I'm not able to build the repair shop, because it's directly related to that.
And for specifically the storing of those vehicles is with regard to the short-term storage while vehicles are in line, what hardship would you experience if that conditional use and the variance was denied?
That is very difficult, because, I mean, being a truck driver, even you have a special schedule to drive, you don't drive like you want whatever you want. So you have to have, especially if a company driver or something like that, you come home, you want to be with your family, you have to have where to park next to your home as close as possible, but, and also, I mean, we like a company, we have to offer them these options, so, and if we don't have it, it will be very difficult.
Is it safe to say that there are no other, in this area, that there are no other businesses that allow or would allow a similar storage that you are going to offer? For example, would one of the truck stops allow them to potentially store their semi there for a week?
Yeah, no, usually the track stops are low for 24 or 34 hours, which we don't restock, but sometimes the drivers, they have a family, they're working hard, but they have to go on vacation. Going on vacation, you cannot go for two, three days, you have to go for a week, sometimes it depends how they arrange. So it will be difficult to keep the trucks on the track stops which are close to, and but also, I mean, it's our equipment, and it's risky to park somewhere where it's open area, so it's a lot of stolen trucks or it's a lot of crimes, I mean, which when it's open area and you don't have a security gate or something like that.
And we'll get to the security in a second, but it's safe to say that in this area, you would be offering a unique need that is necessary?
Correct, yes.
And while you're on that security, what do you plan on doing for security for that storage area?
So usually for the storage area, you will have to have a security gate first, and which on the gate will be a video surveillance, will be manage everyone who is coming in, coming out, and mostly, like I said, we're planning this storage to have, especially in the nighttime, to be used by the company drivers, something like that, will have a gate code or something like that, I mean, will be a special access, will not gonna come everyone when they want just to park, and that's it, so to be a strict management there to be safe and.
If, if these uses, the very, the conditional use and the variances were not granted, it would be safe to say that you would not be able to utilize the property to its intended purpose and highest and best use, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
And you don't believe that the variance and the conditional use would confer or give you some privilege that you, that would be denied to other owners, that's correct?
Yeah, that's correct, I don't think it's gonna be any privilege, because all around, it's, it's even across south, southeast, southwest, I think it's, in the south is an asphalt company, which we have industrial, and they have a truck parking right there, and also across the street to asphalt company, a little bit south, it's another trucking facility, which we have, I mean, I don't think that will happen right away.
And on that line, is it safe to say of anything that by granting the conditional use and the variances, it would provide you in a more equal position to owners, surrounding property owners, because you would be able to operate the property in the same or substantially similar manner as the trucking company down there?
Yeah, yeah.
And you bought this property from a previous owner that had the property rezoned to B3, correct?
Correct, yes.
And that was rezoned after the 2030 plan and beyond came out, correct?
Correct, yes.
And you bought the property zoned for business that was approved by the county to be rezoned for business, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, that was a reason, a reason for me to buy, because it was already zoned.
And do you believe the proposed conditional use and variance request does provide a need that is necessary for the community, correct?
Correct, yes.
And do you believe that this conditional use and variance would provide a positive impact on the agricultural community?
Yes, yes, because, I mean, we'll be able to help them with repair, welding, and a lot of stuff, even for the neighbors, if someone will need any repair or welds or something like that, we'll be happy to help them.
Okay, so the repair shop is more than just working on, you know?
Correct, just, yes, yes.
So you offer a wide breadth to the community?
Correct, yes.
And you won't be preparing or repairing any trucks in the proposed storage area, correct?
No, definitely.
And you're not gonna be washing any trucks on site?
No, no.
And will you be posting signs leaving the facility as they leave the facility, directing drivers to that roundabout, correct?
Yes, we working with IDOT, so also will be, not, will be signs and will be, I mean, verbally all the time inform them what they have to go on the right side, but most of this, we will have even the concrete form from the exit, which is coming only north. So with the truck and trailer, it will be impossible to make a left turn right there, yeah.
So, and, and I will defer to Mr. Condon on the conversations and workings with IDOT on that. Just to clarify though, there will only be a right-hand exit from the property and a right-hand entrance into the property, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
And is it safe to say that the conditional use and the variance requests are substantial and integral part of your business plan?
Correct.
Is it safe to say that if the conditional use or variances were denied, that you likely would not be able to open this prospective business?
Yes, that's correct, because it's strictly related to my business.
And do you believe that this proposed business will have a positive impact on the local economy?
Yes, because it'll be new jobs even for office, new jobs for, for warehouse, for truck repair, and also in the office of needed personnel, so, will be new jobs, will be tax, taxes for the county for the, so, yeah.
And approximately, and I know this is an estimate based upon bulk of business, how many employees do you plan on hiring for this business?
For this, this business, I'm thinking initially 20 to 35 people in the office, but also will be an option for the drivers, which will live around here, they all have close to their home parking, and they will be able to come to work in our company, so, I mean, in the office gonna be 25 to 35, but also will be open more and more position for the drivers, it will be around this area, and there's a lot of drivers from this area, I still have it right now in my trucking company.
So the office employees includes the warehouse employees, truck keepers, general office staff, and the mechanics for the repairs?
Yes, dispatchers, mechanics, yes.
Okay. And you've already touched on this, but you believe that the proposed business would have a positive impact on the commercial and industrial tax base of McHenry County, correct?
Correct, yes.
And to the best of your knowledge, the property is not in a wetland, a flood plain or sensitive aquifer area, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Can you briefly describe what is surrounding the subject property to the north, the south, the east, and the west?
So in the north, we have a B3 zone, which is a commercial, so in the west side, we have also a B3 zone, which is following with residential area, and in the south, we have that asphalt company, which have an industrial asphalt production, so, and southeast, southwest, it's also trucking company going to use 20.
I have nothing further for Mr. Sandu, if I may inquire of Mr. Condon. Mr. Condon, how are you this afternoon?
Good, thanks. Do you want me to switch over so you're not, don't wanna cross?
My voice carries, I did some theater. Please state your name and your occupation for the record.
James Condon, civil engineer.
And are you familiar with the property located on Route 20, Marengo, Illinois, and made subject of this petition for conditional use and variances?
Very familiar.
And how are you familiar with that property?
When we originally started working on the project, it was proposed to be, for the land, this area and around this area, it was originally proposed to be a single-family development, E1. We did the planning through that process, and, and then of course, the housing market, we all enjoyed that, and that stopped it. Since that time, we worked, we worked with Mr. Seedland, who was the owner of the property after the residential project had been terminated, and we worked with him in the E, the planning for the E3 rezoning of the frontage of the property, and now we're working on a site plan within the E3 area.
You said E3, do you mean B3?
B3, sorry, B3, E3, B3.
Let the record. For the record. Let the record reflect that it is in fact B3.
Sorry about that.
And that was gonna be my next question, the property is currently zoned B3, correct?
Yes, yes. Also, we, I also actually did the engineering for the property across the street, the final engineering there, also the residential subdivision across the street, with the commercial along the frontage, that's the big difference there is residential frontage being commercial through there, so.
So you are aware, very familiar with that subdivision, that there is the ability for it to have the commercial in the front part?
That's exactly what was planned when we were going on.
To the best of your knowledge, does that plan still stand?
I believe so.
Okay. And was the property rezoned to B3 after, before, or after the 2030 plan?
I believe it was after the 2030 plan, I think the 2030 plan included the estate designation because it had estate zoning on it already.
Okay.
But since that time, again, the property owner, prior to this purchase, was Mr. Seedland, and he converted the frontage to B3.
And that's the property that my client currently owns, correct?
That is part of the, yes, this property is part of all of that.
And to the best of your knowledge, are there adequate utilities, road access, drainage, and other facilities to the property?
Yes.
And has the proposed conditional use and variances been designed to provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion and hazard?
That is our belief, yes, we've actually retained an additional consultant, WT Group, they specialize in, in highway engineering, they did the design, the write-in, write-out, they initially submitted the geometry, the conceptual planning, and if you look at, we submitted today, a copy of their plans that shows three different things, the overall plan, the geometry of the write-in, write-out, and then the truck turning movements, and those have been submitted to IDOT, is my understanding. IDOT has preliminarily approved, they never fully approved it until it's time to get the permit, but they have approved the location and the geometry preliminarily, and we would then, assuming we were fortunate enough to obtain the conditional use and the variances, we would then proceed to apply for the final permit from IDOT. The plans actually have been prepared for that improvement.
And to the best of your knowledge, IDOT has had no concerns with the plans as presented, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and can you briefly describe the prospective plan for ingress and egress on the property?
It's, it's just simply a write-in, write-out, that's the, the property is self-contained, it doesn't have any other access points currently, so the access is from Route 20, the location. If you understand, IDAS general guidelines, on a route like Route 120, they allow full access about once every thousand feet, and then they'll allow a write-in, write-out about 500 feet from a full access. So when you look at this property, just to the north- So when you look at this property, just to the north, you have the entrance into the subdivision to the west. We are just over 500 feet south of there. I suspect one property is developed to the north. There'll be a full access just north of our property in line with the entrance to subdivision and the commercial property to the west.
And let the record reflect that that actually has already, there's been an easement recorded on those parcels that would be subject to that full access point. I was a part of that easement process, so that is ready to go when and if the property is ever developed. So it's not going to be a concern on trying to buy back land because those easements have already been recorded. Now, you believe that this should not substantially increase traffic congestion, correct? To the best of your knowledge, obviously you are at IDOT.
I, I would, from our understanding with working with the WT Group, we do not anticipate any major traffic modifications based on this project. And again, when they've submitted our, our plan and their entrance improvements to IDOT, if there were any major concerns on the capacity of Route 20 as a result of this development, IDOT would then, and will during the permitting process, review and require us to do whatever additional improvements would be needed. But to this point, that has not been indicated that it's needed.
You just answered my next question. Now, switching gears, would you please briefly describe how you're handling the storm water management and to protect any groundwater recharge and quality?
I think you showed an existing topography previously. And we can just, if we can just glance back to that up, one more right there, I think it was, yeah. And if you can just zoom in a little bit on that, you'll see that the property generally drains. If you are familiar with topography, the property has a swell going along the northwestern, northeastern edge that drains south to the southeast corner or southwest corner. What we are proposing then, if you were to look at the site plan, you'll see a detention basin at the south property line. Right there, detention basin at the south property line. The detention basin will be designed in accordance with the McHenry County Stormwater Ordinance. And assuming we were fortunate enough to get the conditional use and the variance, we would then proceed through the permitting process, the building permit and site plan permitting process, which would then be reviewed by staff. But it's been sized in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. The detention basin itself is very similar to a lot of the detention basins these days where we're providing a flat bottom detention basin with natural vegetation on the bottom to improve the water quality. The drainage utilizes swells both along the west and east property lines from the impervious surfaces to drain to the detention basin just for water quality purposes, again. And it'll be restricted with a restricted release rate so that it doesn't exceed the capacity of downstream facilities. It'll be reviewed not only by the county, but since we are draining into IDOT's right of way, we get the double whammy of the joy of working with IDOT's drainage requirements, so.
All right. Switching gears yet again, can you briefly describe that site plan that you provided?
Sure. You see in the, in the center part of the property, the main entrance is the write-in, write-out entrance. It's located approximately, just over 500 feet from the entrance into the residential subdivision. You enter to the left. As you enter, you'll see the repair shop with the office and warehouse facilities on the northern half of the building. As you go, as you look at the parking in the front, the northern front of the open parking, paved areas would be the employee parking and any visitor parking. And then as you traverse southwest, south and east, I should say, you have your truck stores for either repair or the temporary outdoor storage of vehicles that would utilize the property. And then the rear, you'll see we do have some parking for the, the smaller semi-tractors, and I forget the name of them.
Boktales.
Boktales, what did you say?
Boktales.
Boktales. I always forget that, I apologize. Just to move vehicles, vehicles around for repair of trailers and things like that, so. And that is, and then to the south, you have the detention basin we mentioned already. To the northwest, we have an area set aside for deten, or for the septic system. And that's pretty much the site.
And unless something changes, you, you plan to substantially conform to the site plan as stated, correct?
Yes.
And you believe the site plans meet the development standards, correct?
They've been designed for that exact purpose, to comply with those. And if we, I mean, when I'm perfect, if we miss something through the review process, we'd simply make the revisions to comply with the requirements, UDO, Stormwater Ordinance, et cetera.
Okay.
Health Department requirements.
And I know you didn't particularly, you didn't design the landscape plan, but do you believe that that plan complies with the standards?
Yes. We contracted with, we don't do landscape plans, so we contracted what they, what it does landscape plans. Their role, just like ours, is to review the county ordinances and then provide a landscape plan that's in accordance with that. We've provided that to date, or what we believe is in conformance, again, as we go through the building process, that will officially be submitted and reviewed. And any modifications that would be required, we make those changes to comply with the ordinance in order to get the, the actual building permit to construct.
And would you say substantially the same statement as with regard to the signage plans?
With the signage plan and your next one will be the lighting plan.
Yep.
So all three of those plans, we believe that we're in conformance with the county requirements. And, but if we aren't for any reason when we go for the building permit, we would have to make those modifications in order to obtain the permits to construct, so. And again, we're very similar to the requirements that were required for the commercial property that's directly across the street between us and the residential. You're going to have those same types of things. The landscaping that that commercial would do, we're doing similar landscaping. The lighting in that commercial would do, we're doing the lighting. So you kind of have a, between us and the residential, you have that commercial strip right there. And that's, that's an important part of this whole thing, that those guidelines that we use will also be used right across the street, so.
And lastly, normally I would ask what surrounds the property, but you've already, you've already hit that nail on the head. Do you believe that there's adequate road frontage pursuant to the Uniform Development Ordinance for this?
Yes. Do I think that there's sufficient road frontage for this purpose? Yes, absolutely.
I have nothing further of Mr. Condon.
Okay, before we start with other questions from the other board members, I just want to clarify on the site plan. One of the standards for a storage yard is that storage areas shall be restricted to those areas so designated on the site plan. Can you designate on the site plan which areas will be for the storage yard and which area is, which parking places are for repairs for your business allowed by right? Because it has to be specifically identified on the site plan.
So I believe that they were redrawn. Do you want to come up with anything?
And you talked about a gate going into the storage yard, and I don't see that on the site plan either.
Correct, so.
Yes, for the storage yard, mostly will be this side here.
That's be specific, sir.
Oh, okay.
Which, which space, which space is for the storage yard and which parking is for the business allowed by right?
So this will be for the storage yard.
So anything to the south of the entrance is for the storage yard?
Yes, it will be for the storage yard, yes.
This portion.
And the lead will be this side also.
And anything to the north is for your business?
Yes.
So any trucks being used as part of the business will be in that area? And behind the building, that would be?
Behind the building will be for repair when it'll come the trucks, so.
That will not be the storage yard?
No.
So the conditional use request is only for the area south of the entrance?
Yes. I have west and south.
You just told me that west
No.
was, was for your repair business.
Yeah, this is for repair business also, but I mean.
I think what he's trying to say is in some, in some instances with the repairs themselves, if they're waiting for parts, it's going to be, sometimes they come in in a couple of days, sometimes they, it takes a couple of weeks, maybe.
But this is specific, that the area of the storage yard needs to be specifically identified just for the storage area. So I want to know where that is and where is the gate?
This is just the storage yard, correct?
Yes.
And this is all business part, correct?
Yeah, that is for the business part.
And where on this map would the, the gate be?
The gate will be here.
So you're going to have a security gate that everybody has?
Yeah, here will be a security gate, will be a video surveillance right there.
Even if somebody's coming in for a repair and your employee?
For everything coming in. Well, not going to be another gate.
So your employees will have to punch in a code before they can get into work?
Yeah. Or usually you come in the morning, you open it, and then everyone is coming inside. And after this, after business hours, you just close the gate and then everyone which will have to, the end will have to put the gate or to use the, yeah, to, to use that code to get in.
I have to ask Ms. Kurtzman, so was it your understanding that on the site plan that that had to be identified and that that was going to be the area for the storage yard is to the right of the driveway?
I know that in staff plat, we did discuss that the southern portion there would be the storage area. We did miss that it needed to be noted specifically on the site plan.
But if, if I may, just for clarification, again, the gate that we're referring to is the gate, and that gate will be closed and codes required or entrance required only after normal business hours of the repair shop and office facility, you know, the office, warehouse, repair shop facility. So that's, that will be the only gate. There won't be a specific separation between where the outdoor storage is and access to the remainder of the site.
So how many parking places for semis are there north of that entrance that will be used in your business by right?
So let's say 10, 15.
Okay.
I think we also need to clarify when, from what I understood was in that, so if you look at the northernmost trucking parking stalls, those will be used for the repair shop. And approximately half of those of the repair shop will be used for the repair shop.
Correct.
The remainder of that front portion that's in front of the building there, about half of that will be along with everything south of the entrance.
Yes, well, you'll need to identify specifically then where that would be. How many of those would be the storage and how many would be for your business?
So 15 will be for, for business and the rest will remain for storage.
How many for the business?
15.
15?
Yeah, one, five, yeah.
Parking places for the business and the rest for the conditional use?
Yes.
All right, so we got that clear. So, right.
Thank you. I appreciate the, that you've given. I just wanted to go through a couple of questions that I had related to it. You talk about short-term storage for other vehicles. What, what is short-term and are you doing like a lease? Or how are you contracting with these other people to store their vehicles?
So short-term is exactly what the testimony reflected, which would be waiting for, in line for repairs on vacations, is not going to be?
Yes, usually the, this is for the, like we said before, it's going to be, the, the drivers have hours to drive. Then they have 34 hours to do the restart. So mostly the, the drivers are coming home, they live around, and they have to park the trucks right there for minimum 34 hours to get the restart hours. And then sometimes, sometimes they just come and go through, so. And, but mostly, and also like I said, for vacation, they're going for one to two weeks. And also, we have, will be a parking, we're thinking to have a parking for the drivers which living, living around, so they'll be able to park where it's safe and for, also for, to have time to spend with family and then to come back to go to work.
The second part of my question is, how are you finding these other vehicles that are not owned by you? I assume that like the one-week vacation and things like that would be for your employees.
Correct.
But these other vehicles from other people, would they be storing them for months? A week, a few days?
No, no, because being a truck driver, having a truck, you cannot truck in the parking spot for a month because you'll be broke down. So it's a lot of spends to keep one truck in the parking spot. So usually by experience, I'm like 13 years in this business, so I know my experience. Everyone is coming home, maybe it's sick, have, and usually if it's another people, so they, they, they don't stay home more than, than a week or something like that. Or only if they are sick or something, they have some healthy issues, they can stay two, three weeks, for example. But as soon you, you're working, so you have to pay your bills and you have to keep your family. So usually the trucks, doesn't matter if it's our company or it's another company, they, they don't stay too much.
And would, it would just be the trucks there? You wouldn't have like people stopping to sleep in the cabs or stay overnight?
No, especially like the gate will be closed, we'll have to check for anyone inside because even for our safety, for even for our building safety, we have to check what we don't have any, any persons right there which can do something.
That's, that leads me to my next question. So you're going to have a gate for after business hours. How many trucks do you anticipate arriving like weekly after business hours using that gate? Is your operation mostly during business hours or do you anticipate a lot of 24/7?
Usually, usually in the weekends. I, I mean, I have a, so usually during the working days, Monday to Friday, so Friday night, Saturday, they're coming home and they're leaving Monday morning, so. Or Sunday evening. But usually the, the drivers, they're coming home for the weekends, which I have, which I'm experiencing right now.
So what, to get back to my question, what time of day are you going to see most of your in-and-outs?
In-and-outs are going to be, it's hard to say. During the day, it's slowly, but evening like between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., usually they're coming home and they just park the truck and go home.
And your primary security system is surveillance then? You're just going to have cameras?
Yeah, it's video, video surveillance and the security gate and fence. Maybe you will be allowed to, will do even the fence to have around, so.
Okay, and then I wanted to get to the, to the lighting questions. I assume that you've received all the correspondence from the various objectors, and I didn't know if you wanted to speak to the lighting plan. Is this a 24/7 lighting plan? You're going to be lit up all night? Or like, how often are you going to have the parking lot lit up like the plan you've proposed?
For the parking?
Well, for the whole site, right? Because you included your entire photo plan in the packet. And we did receive several comments on that, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk through how that's going to work.
So my understanding, and I don't mean to speak for my client, is obviously the business portion wouldn't be fully lit 24/7, right? The storage, I believe, would have at least some lighting for safety, for surveillance, but I can't speak to that. So she's asking essentially, for the storage area, are you going to have that lit up like a cardio ship 24/7 or is there, is, are the lights going to be turned off?
The lights, I mean, we can put, you can use a smart light, which just, when it's coming in, just to, to come up and then to turn off. So with the lights, I will work with.
I think the best way to answer that is.
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Jim Condon, I apologize. The lighting, the purpose of the lighting plan in areas of the storage is for security purposes, which is generally not a overly bright like you would have in commercial or like you mentioned, the auto dealership where you have so much light there. That is not the intent of this. The intent of the lighting in those areas are for security and actually it's the same all the way through it. So that's the purpose of it. It won't be that commercial where you're trying to sell something on your lot and you need that type of lighting, just simply for security purposes.
Thank you. Another question I had about the asphalt grindings. Can you speak to the integrity of those? I mean, I assume that these trucks are gonna be pretty heavy if they're coming in with trailers and things like that. Can you just speak to the integrity of the, how how often you're gonna have to repair that and and why it was chosen in lieu of asphalt?
How often do you have to repair that? For starters, why it was chosen, it's it's another alternative for a paved surface, a surface to be able to drive on. It works a little better than like a gravel surface in that once you use those asphalt grindings, you're using recycled material, which is beneficial beneficial on two fronts, one for the recycling, two for the economy of it. What happens with those 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 grindings, especially if you put them down in the summertime is the sun will actually bake that, start to 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 soften that asphalt, the existing asphalt in those grindings, and they'll bind up together and provide enough support for the for, to make it more of a solid, impervious surface, not something that's that's like gravel that's relatively loose when you're gonna turn on it. So those are the reasons why it was selected for that. And in particular, where it's really handy is behind the concrete areas. As part of the trailer storage systems, you have a roll of concrete where you park the legs on the semi-trailers. And especially behind those where it's really just straight back and straight out, it's very effective in those areas. There's not an issue with turning and things like that and that, so.
So just to be clear, it's less maintenance in the long run to opt for the asphalt grindings versus gravel? And it would reduce traffic to the site because you would have to do less construction work, repairs?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, let me just review. I took a bunch of notes in two spots. And you're not going to do any repairs in the storage area? All the repairs will be conducted inside the building, right?
Yes, definitely.
And can you give me an idea of the noise that would be generated if it's inside the building? Would this be something that that would be objectionable to somebody who lived nearby?
Usually, I mean, right now I have rent in the shop, so I'm working right now and I have experience about that. Noise outside of the shop is very minimal, so it's practically nothing. Because we have walls, I mean, which are specially isolated, so not to do any noise or something like that. So mostly when you work, you work with the closed doors and noise is very minimal. So let's say twenty feet, fifty feet will be a little bit noise, but but nothing about this noise is very.
We would want to again point out that that issue exists by right under the zoning that's there already.
Right.
So regardless of the condition of use or the variances, that can exist right there. But generally speaking, we don't think that, you don't believe that there's anything too significant.
Right, and in that same vein, as it comes to the variance regarding the storage, you don't anticipate that generating a lot of noise overnight or off-hours or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Schneffler?
Yeah, I would normally be able to ask you a lot of questions, but since the situation here has changed with just the conditional use, I'm somewhat limited. Number one, let's start back at the gate again. I'm just curious, what are your projected normal hours of operation planning to be at this time, your best guess?
So mostly about hours of operation is, let's say, maximum at six A M till plus minus seven P M. But usually it's eight till five. But let's say to 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 go extended into from six to seven P M. So and Monday to Friday and Saturday, seven A M till five P M. But mostly, I mean, everyone is working Saturday by noon or a little bit over afternoon, so.
All right, what's what's going to happen when a trucker calls you personally or the business itself and says, I need to drop drop my truck off, let's say, at nine o'clock at night? Does someone give him an access code? He just pulls right in and dumps his truck somewhere or not?
Usually that doesn't happen. First of all, we have three minutes away, we have a truck stop. So we easily will recommend them to go to the truck stop to park and come in the morning easily. So because he will stay in the truck and truck will be in safe condition. Usually the the storage we need for the trucks, which we don't have drivers inside, so will be safe and all this stuff. But about this situation, we'll recommend to stay three minutes away, park right there in the morning just to come in the business hours to to park and to do what we have to do.
Okay, very good. Back to the gate. Video coverage understood that. Who's going to be monitoring that? You personally or one of your managers?
I have managed on that, even I have access twenty-four-seven on all this stuff. Right now, this technology is help you a lot to to to.
Is it, let me ask you this, is it strictly there to monitor who comes and goes or can you communicate to someone if they pull up at the gate?
Excuse me, I don't understand.
So can, Elizabeth Fittner for the record, he is asking whether or not if the gate allows you to communicate with someone that is coming up to the gate or if they're gonna have just a simple access code?
Will have to communicate, will have to communicate and also will have, second option will be with the access code.
Okay, and I'll move on from that for now. The fencing, I mean, it's one thing to have the gate. At this time, it didn't sound like you were necessarily planning to fence the entire facility in. Is that correct?
We'll have that permit, yes. If not, I mean, even with, even we have like a canal right there and you don't have access to the property with another way, so. Always to get inside, you'll have to use the gate. So in the worst scenario, if you don't gonna have a fence, so we're not gonna be able to access the facility from another side.
Okay, could I ask your designer?
Jim Condon for the record. What we showed on our plan was a fence where the fence is required by ordinance and that would be adjacent to the residential. So we did show a screening fence there. We haven't proceeded far enough to discuss whether we want a security fence around the facility or not. It hasn't been addressed, to be completely honest with you. But we're talking here now, it sounds like we may very well be putting a full security fence around the site if that's what we'd like. It's not required under the U D O, so we didn't show it at this time.
Okay, I just, I'll set two more questions and then I think I'll be done for a while. Are you, when you lay, let's say you lay the grindings down, you put the foundation in for the building, et cetera, you got the groundwork done. Do you have to do any considerable grading on the lot? Are you gonna build it pretty much on the existing?
No, there'll be substantial grading throughout the property. The property slopes from the north to the south and slopes greater than you would want for a trucking facility. And so we'll be sloping from the north to the south. In addition to that, you'll see us berming along the detention basin so that we can build a berm to hold the water back. So there'll be substantial grading throughout the site.
So you're gonna attempt to make a more or less level site?
Relatively level. It will, you know, for the length of the building, around the building, it will be flat away from the building. And if you look in the plans, we'd be glad to show you, but we've actually developed a preliminary grading plan for it that shows you the grading for it that I think we've submitted already. Or and then we shared it with staff through the staff plant review process, if that's what it was, if I recall.
I I don't wanna pull that topo back up, topography picture. You you could tell me, what is the drop again? Is it like twenty feet across the entire?
That's a very good question and I haven't done it, I haven't looked at it for six months, so I don't recall, but it is.
It's more than a few.
I'll tell you in a second.
It's more than a few feet. Okay, here it is.
So you're going from nine seventy down to nine fifty, so it's twenty, twenty-five feet, probably twenty-five.
That's substantial.
Almost thirty feet, but yeah.
The last question I'll ask you, it's a little easier maybe. You mentioned berming around the detention pond. Wouldn't it be a good idea to berm all along Route twenty so the residents have a better view, see less of your action, number one? And number two, so that renegade trucks or other vehicles can't drive over the berms and into the lot, et cetera?
I I think from a berming standpoint, it's a business, so you'd want some visibility to it, so that's why we didn't show it. And then I would go back again to the point that the business can exist just the way it is and doesn't need to be bermed. We haven't, and so we haven't showed that. That was not a requirement of it. That's why, and so, again, we're on a main thoroughfare and one of the benefits of sites like this is the main thoroughfare is the traffic and the visibility from that location. So those are the reasons why we did not include that.
Okay, very good. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Before I go to Ms. Gardner, I have a question for staff because I'm really confused on this. So under the principal use standards for a storage yard, number two says a storage yard shall be completely enclosed by a solid fence, a minimum of six feet in height, with openings only for ingress and egress along all lot lines adjacent to property, not zoned for industrial use. This is not zoned for industrial use, this is B-three zoning. Why did we not require a solid fence all around the areas for a storage yard?
I don't have a good answer for that.
Or could it be that the the storage yard is not the principal use?
The principal use is the business. The storage yard is a ancillary part of the business, but as a storage yard, it does require the conditional use program.
Because number three is that all outdoor storage areas shall be paved and they're asking a variance from standard number three.
Correct.
But standard number two doesn't seem to be addressed at all. And then that storage area shall be restricted to those areas so designated on the site plan and we don't have that.
Correct.
Do you?
Okay. So I'm finding that this petition is not addressing all the things that are necessary under our ordinance.
I I I think you found one, Jim Condon again speaking, I think you found one that we missed absolutely and I, we would just discussed it and I don't think we have any objection to providing a a fence around the outdoor storage area.
And indicating, Elizabeth Fittner, indicating the desired storage area. From my recollection, there, the reason that standard two was not required is because that is not, Mr. Eldridge is correct, is because it was not the primary purpose of this facility. The primary purpose is what is allowed under the B-three, which is the repair shop and parts warehouse. This is an ancillary addition to this this endeavor, so to speak. I'm happy to submit a revised.
So why would you allow, why would you ask for a variance on number three then?
Number three, because it does specifically say it requires pavement. We're asking for the variances to grindings. Again, this is an ancillary, so we just wanted to make it clear that we were gonna use grindings in lieu of pavement.
I don't understand why you would say one but not the other. Like you say, you don't need to apply it to number two because it's ancillary, but you're asking a variance for number three even though you say it's ancillary to the premises.
Because it was strongly recommended by staff to ask for that request.
All right, we'll just move on with questions from the board. I'll move to Ms. Gardner.
Thank you. My first question is, can you possibly get a revised site plan with all these new things added?
Which which new things are we referring to?
The fencing, the gate, the designated parking areas.
Gate, fencing.
Those are named storage area.
Named storage, sure. Sure, yeah.
Okay. Some of my questions have been answered, but I still have a few more. Now, I understand that your business is repair, truck repair, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay, but is this also going to be a trucking business on this site?
I have a trucking company, so, I mean, that's that's why I need also offices, that's why I said, yeah.
So then we'll be operating out of the same site?
Yes, yes.
Trucking company and the repair?
Yes.
And incidentally, the storage area?
Correct, yes.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Now, you said that men will not, or truckers will not be allowed to sleep overnight in their trucks?
Correct, yes.
Okay. How do these truckers get back and forth? I mean, once they come and park their trucks, do they just walk out and go somewhere else?
Usually the each driver have his own spot. And when he's coming to work, he park his personal car and he pick up the truck and go and leave. When he's coming back home, he just take, take his car, park the truck and just leave.
So there's gonna be, if there isn't a truck in a place, there will be that trucker's car?
Usually it's cars, mostly eighty percent of it. Sometimes wives can bring them, but mostly they have the own, own car which they park right there and come and back and go.
Okay. Can you kind of go through the landscape plan and just, I mean, we have this, which doesn't really delineate a lot, so I was just wondering what is being planned landscape-wise for the site?
So on page, I don't know what page it is, there are several pages with regard to this landscape plan that indicate different types of trees. I can't. Is it on your?
Landscape plan is part of?
It's part of your flash drive?
No, no, this is part of yours.
I know, and they're very hard to read.
All right, there you go. We're gonna move it down the table thing.
Okay, so these are the, I think it's very hard to do. All right, let's let's skip the landscaping. Like right now, I don't hear them. I'm just going to assume you'll make it look nice, right?
That's the goal.
Okay. When do you plan on constructing the repair shop?
As soon as we'll have a permit, so we think to start working with that. So I am thinking one, two years.
One, two years, okay. Now, have you been in the truck repair business before or is this a new venture for you?
I have right now rented with my brother. We have, I'm with, in business right now, in this business right now, but I have a trucking company for like ten, twelve years, yeah.
Okay, but the repair thing is?
Repair, I'm right now, last couple of years, yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you. Mr. Eldridge?
Oh, thank you. I think most of my questions are from Mr. Condon. You have provided us with lighting, drainage, landscaping, entrance plans. It would be correct to say that on all of these things, there are county standards for B-three and that whatever those standards are, you will meet them and you would be required to meet them under any circumstances. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And you would, should you meet them, you'd be permitted to do what you wish to do under any circumstances because this is B-three.
With the exception of the conditional use and the variances, yes.
Yes, but I mean, you'd be able to have exactly the same lighting. Yes, but I mean, you'd be able to have exactly the same lighting.
Yes.
You would, the, the entrance and egress would be exactly the same. Fencing on the conditional use part is likely to be different, but, and screening may be different on that part. But you would never be required to have, to hide your business from a public, from a public right-of-way for that portion of what you have the right to do without coming before this board or anybody. You do have to meet the permit standards of the county, but meeting the permit standards of the county, you can go ahead and do what you intend to do without getting our permission or anyone else's permission.
That is my understanding, yes.
Second, with regard to the road, it's US Highway 20 that's in front of this property, I believe, which is managed in Illinois by the Illinois Department of Transportation. The county has no jurisdiction over that at all, does it?
It does, I, I won't speak for the county and what county does or doesn't. The permitting process for that entrance is through IDOT.
Yes. And IDOT will make a determination of the impact, if any, on traffic by your project, and will set standards.
Yes, they, that's exactly what they want.
And right now, what you think they are going to require is a pork chop creating a right-in, right-out, and nothing further.
That is correct.
You do not think that they will require acceleration or deceleration lanes or widening of 20 in front of your property.
We actually, the, the right-in, right-out does include a deceleration lane.
Okay. A deceleration, but not an acceleration.
Correct.
Okay. Do you anticipate that your detention area will be wet or dry?
The, it will be a wetland type of basin.
Okay, so effectively, it will be like a marsh or will be like a pond?
A marsh, it will not be like a pond. It will not be excavated to have depths of up to five. I forget what the ordinance specifically says, if it's five or six feet, or a portion of ten, but it will be a shallow, wetland type of vegetation.
Okay, but it will include not only the drainage from your site directly, but also will drain your frontage of, probably a little bit to the north, along 20 into your, into your, your wetland.
There are some off-site areas to the north that we anticipate until that property were to develop will drain through our property. And then there is some drainage that drains around our detention basin from the east, from the wooded area, the wooded area. We actually, if I recall correctly, created a swell around the outside of our detention basin, not through it, for off-site areas. But yes, there will be some to the north, and we will not, and we will still have other areas.
And once again, that is governed both by McHenry County, and in the case of drainage affecting Route 20 by IDOT, is that correct? Okay. And with regard to lighting, the county's code provides that lighting shall stay onsite. And so your lighting primarily are not going to be floodlights directed at the housing area, but will just be lighting your own area with, within limits, very little affecting either the road or across the road.
That is correct. We've provided a illumination plan that shows the limits of the lighting beyond our property, and is pretty close to zero at our property limits, is what our plan indicates.
Okay, that's everything I have right now.
Mr. Condon?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I believe back in, when we were preparing the 2030 plan, we called it a dark sky description for the lighting, is that correct? About that, because it's directed down and it doesn't go out like a sodium vapor light would go?
I, I will, I will tell you that is not my expertise.
Okay. I understand that the, 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 posts, thank you, are thirty feet tall. How tall are, well, maybe that's not actually your expertise, but the gentleman's is, how tall are semis?
Thirteen point six.
I'm sorry?
Thirteen point six.
Thirteen point six, so you're just, just half of the distance from where these lights are going to be. Sounds good to me, okay. And then RAB, and we're on to the lighting. The photo cell boxes for what? I thought it said it was for a dimmer. Do you know?
I do not.
Okay. Because our numbered, on, on, it's, I think, page three of the RAB. And it says, oh, yeah, it's the S-L-I-M-X-S, those three pages. It's a little teeny tiny box, and it looks like it has something at the bottom in it.
This one? Tiny little guy?
No. Nope, it's not that one, it's another one. It's like, it, it seems to me to be a box that goes along the side. Keep going, keep going. It looks to me like it's something that's posed, that goes onto the post, and it looks like a dimmer. Because it says it's a photo cell box for what? And that's not the light? And that was my question.
If it's a photo cell box, I, I'm not one hundred percent familiar with that. But if it's a photo cell box, it's probably, it's what sets the lights, kicks the lights on.
Kicks the lights on? Kicks lights on, okay. And that was, yep, just a question for me, it was, I understand what those, the top parts are, are the lights, the post is the post, and the other thing is a box.
For the record, it does say driver includes, and Elizabeth Fittner here, it does say driver includes dimming control wiring, dimming requirements, dimming circuit, dims down to ten percent.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that it was something, because the gentleman was talking about being able to dim, or we, you were talking about being able to dim the lights at some time during the night or during the day, that that was possible. And so that's what that photo cell box would be part of helping to do. It's not like, it's something that has to be added later.
That is my understanding when I read through all of this initially. And I'm not, for the record, I am not a lighting expert.
Not asking, not asking that. I just wanted to know if that's, that's what it was, and somebody knew, and I expected that would have been under Mr. Condon's expertise. But I'll take whatever I can get at that end. A bobtail. What are bob, you, you talked about bobtails to begin with. At the back of the, at the back of the building, you have an area where you're going to have room for nine bobtails. It's, you say it's a tractor, it's a, it's all that you, what does it do?
For the rec, Elizabeth Fittner, it's a truck without the semi attached to it, that is the bobtail. It's just the semi truck itself.
That was one of my other questions, is you have all this room for all these semis, and you're going to be working on parts, I would imagine that, that, that there's not a whole bunch of the back part that you're going to be working on. Is there?
Yes, do, do we true, some, yes, it's just, it means just the truck with our trailer, so.
Okay, okay, so now I know how, what that is. Oh, okay. You have right-in, right-in to it and right-out. Right-in comes from I-90, where does 20 go out to? If somebody needs the kind of traffic that you're going to have, you saying that it's local traffic? Or are these are going to be, be people, or they're, it's, it's local use? I, I know it's, I know what it is.
The, the only alternative that we have for access for our site is the right-in, right-out based on IDOT standards. The right-out, what all the, the trucking vehicles will be required to do is go up to the roundabout.
Okay, got it.
And then head south, southeast.
Okay. That makes sense to me, thank you very much, I'm finished.
Mr. Cosin?
Thank you. I would try to just focus on what we have as this site plan stamped February 7th, 2007. Looks like a C-T-A-B 1.0. And if there's any errors, just the inability to read and type font that's too small for publication, but not results of the applicant. Just to be in fact, the entryway is US Route 20, and again, that is the primary authority of the Illinois Department of Transportation governing permitting and access to this property. Then going forward with that, I'd like to go back to the beginning. Can you just give us a little more experience in trucking business? As you had spoken on your authority, how long you've been at it? A number of vehicles that you've been engaged in in a year? No financial details, just the practical experience?
I'm sorry, so just how many trucks?
Just what you, how many have you been experienced with? You have more than one truck, how long you've been in?
Okay. I used to, to be a truck driver since 2013. I was driving for a couple of years, and I built my trucking company for like ten years already, and I have right now close to fifty trucks. So I have enough experience with all, with this business, so, and right now, coming to this numbers of trucks, you need to have a, I'm trying to make more facility for my drivers to have a more, more comfort to see, to, to park, to, to, to go to the, to be much more, much time close to them family and all this stuff, so.
Thank you. Understanding the business side of it, what brought you to this particular location? And how would fulfill your business side? Just, do you live across the street, do your driver, I don't mean to be facetious, I just want to be more direct.
You can actually ask why you picked this site?
Oh.
In my perspective of your business, thank you, Cosin.
I picked this site, first of all, it was B3 zone, it was for the trucking, for my, what I was looking for. Second, it's not so far from I-90. And third, I have, we have a, a lot of drivers I have from this area, Algonkin, Lake Invy Hills, and all this stuff. So it will be closer to, to, to them, so also is not so far from, from me, so I'll be able to, and like you said, it's, it's easy access to I-90.
Just, I, I too is wondering about the, the directional reversal of the vehicles. And just, has IDOT opined on whether the roundabouts will accommodate the truck traffic at their, at those two locations?
IDOT has not commented to us about any issues there. And speaking generally from some experience, not great experience, no design roundabouts, but I am familiar with the process. And that roundabout there is designed to be able to, to, for semis to have no problem traversing it, and completely in a one hundred and, or a three hundred and sixty degree direction, to be able to come back and go south.
Right. Just as IDOTs need to be above thirteen point six feet.
Exactly.
And clipped, in that end of it. In terms of, again, with the, the IDOT plan, the queuing into the property, was that the recommendation of IDOT? If you had more than two trucks waiting to get in, or to be clarified, does, has that accommodated too? So none would be parking out into?
We don't expect any, we don't anticipate any, the traffic volume of this site, the, the consultants, the traffic consultants, WT group, is very familiar with our site, and they gave us no indication that based on our use, that we would have any queuing issues in and out.
Right.
The volume, this is not like a, this is nowhere near a truck stop, where you have vehicles in and out on a continuous, regular, every couple minute basis, like.
And, and, and of course, we're just limited to the issue of storage. So with that, the data table of the site plan shows that there will be sixty-two truck stalls and forty-seven passenger stalls. Of the sixty-two truck stalls, the underlying theme has been, how many will be devoted to storage?
So, Elizabeth Fittner, for the record, I believe my client's testimony was that fifteen percent, or fifteen, I apologize, fifteen are going to be for business and the remaining for storage, obviously not including the employee parking, because I believe that's a different parking allocation, rather than the stalls.
So using the site plan and my pen, going to the south, it appears that there are thirty-two dashed lines. Going to the north, there are seventeen. But I was unable to locate any of the forty-seven passenger stalls. That comes out to forty-seven passenger stalls in the far northwest corner? So the drivers, so is that clear that we're, we're at the thirty-two, the entire thirty-two stalls south would be the storage? And only twelve or two of the seventeen would be for the repair?
I believe the fifteen of the seventeen are more like.
Fifteen. Well, there's, there's, at the north?
Again, we can't have everybody just jumping in, you've got to identify yourselves.
Jim Condon, if you look at the site plan, the residential, the, the car parking or regular vehicle parking is the northwest, those were the stalls there. If you look, the plan that you have isn't blown up, but the numbers are actually on the plan. There are five stalls, five full truck parking stalls behind the building at the north there. And then there'll be an additional, approximately, additional ten stalls in front of the repair shop that will be used for the repair shop. The remainder of those stalls in the front of the building would be used for storage.
Which is the seven that were?
I did not do the math, and I'm so used to using a calculator, if I guarantee, if I try to do it manually, I'd make a mistake.
So, so we're looking at possibly forty-nine stalls?
That's what I just did quick, but no guarantee without.
But we're still uncertain.
My index into calculators.
And then with that, then, in terms of the lighting plan, was the lighting plan distinguished between standards, poles to be used for the storage yard versus the area to be used for the repair?
I cannot, we cannot answer that, we did not put the plan together. What I can tell you is based on the zoning, if I recall correctly, the zoning then dictates the lighting requirements for the facility, and the lighting plan was designed in accordance with the lighting requirements of the UDL.
But the storage yard is a conditional use, and so there should be lighting that would have been a matter of right for the repair, and then lighting that would have been brought forth if the conditional use was? Or am I not understanding?
I am not familiar enough with the lighting requirements, as that's not my expertise. I know that the, the lighting designer is familiar with the uses of the facility. If the lighting plan needs to be modified during the review process for the. If the lighting plan needs to be modified during the review process for the building permit and the site permit, then those requirements, the UDO will be reviewed, and any modifications that made will comply with that.
So the possibility does exist, if the conditional use wouldn't go forward, there is likely to be less lighting on the property?
I don't know the specifics of the lighting, I'm sorry.
In terms of the storage detail, how is the storage time managed? How do you know when the duration, somebody has abandoned the vehicle? How do you, how do you regulate occupancy of the stall?
Uh.
Just generally.
I don't know, Domenico Sando, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what you mean, how I manage this one, so you need?
Do, does, do you have a, you have a number for the stall? And does the driver stay there too long? I know you said it's a rarity. But how is that managed, that the driver overstays his lease tenure at that stall? So that you know which one is likely to be abandoned, neglected, or not attended to?
Domenico Sando again, usually each parking spot has a number. And on the number is staying, driver, truck number, trailer number, phone number, company, everything, all information, our records. So as soon we, for us will be, my personnel will be, will be a manager right there, and my personnel will be there every day to, mostly every day to, to check what and where is it. So they'll have all the information about truck, trailer, everything. So they'll be, will be easy to manage everything, when they leave, what, what happened, why. So everything will be under control.
Then, back to the variance in terms of the grindings, is there a, or expand upon it, a drainage base benefit for the grindings to the overlaid flow? Or if you were to have a permanent surface, would you need an underlying storm source system and the like?
Yeah, in this, in this case, the grindings are considered the same, James Canton, sorry, Jim Canton, I shouldn't have said that. The grindings are considered the same as gravel, which is considered the same as asphalt, considered an impervious surface. The, the difference between them is so minimal that from a, from a calculation standpoint, a design calculation standpoint, that they're considered the same thing, so.
So no storm source system inlet or such is required to direct the water sheet flow?
This is not, this is, there is storm sewer, there is storm sewer, and there are drainage swales that will be included. But there's no underground storage like you would have with permeable pavers and things like that. It is not intended to be that type of a service, no.
One more question. We talked about the phasing of construction. Is the repair building going to be constructed before the storage? Or, or the storage being constructed concurrent?
Domenico Sando, I think we'll be in the, I think we'll be starting with the building also first. But depends how the engineering will recommend that, so. But mostly, I think it's going to start with the building first.
I mean more, excuse me, more in terms of the scheduling of operation, will both uses be operated on the same day, month, time?
Yes. Yes. The operation, you can operate with all these only in same time, you cannot do side.
Even though, even though the lot area, by virtue of having a central entryway, lends itself to a phase installation? Or there are impediments in terms of the underlying design and construction that seems to benefit a turnkey operation?
Elizabeth Piffner, I, I believe, I mean, from my discussion with my client, can't have one without the other. So I think the goal is to try it, have it all up and running at the same time. I mean, he needs to be able to, if the storage were presumably to be up and ready first, he needs to have some ability with the offices to manage that storage and to be able to keep an eye on it, with that gate especially. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Domenico Sando, yes, it's correct.
Well, just go further, the, the building would require some portion of the detention base?
The detention will be the first thing that we do. My mass grading of the site will be the first thing that's done. And that will include the stormwater, so, and erosion control. Actually, the first thing is the erosion control.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Jim Canton, by the way.
Yes.
You can tell I'm really a great expert, sorry about that. I can remember that.
Okay, so I have a few questions. So the forty-seven spots for cars, those are employees within the B three district that you're using for your repair business?
Yes, correct.
So they're all office employees or repair people working in your repair shop?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, that's not parking for people that'll be using the, the storage yard, correct?
No, correct.
Okay. I'm having a real problem seeing how with your site plan, how you can put a fence around the storage yard area the way you have it outlined, because you have the driveway coming in to the storage yard area and not into the business. And I just want you to understand and be clear, and I found in the notes that in March thirteenth, you were notified that a six-foot screening fence would be required around the storage area. This is from Renee Hanlon to the applicant, a letter on March thirteenth, saying that that was necessary. So having that be a requirement, that you have that separated, I don't see how the site plan is going to be workable. And I want to see a site plan where this storage yard is completely enclosed inside the six-foot fences required by our ordinance. So that anyone wanting to enforce what happens with the conditional use can actually see where the conditional use portion is versus what is allowed by right in the B three district. So I think that's probably part of why this is a requirement. But I, I don't see the site plan working at all that way. I see it having to be reworked. So I'm just saying that I can't vote on this until I see the new site plan with the requirements required in our ordinance. And then I just had a question because it came up, I saw in site plan review, there was a question about why there were showers in the proposed building, and you said they would be only used for office employees. And so I'm wondering, you know, are truckers going to be going in and showering in the business building? Or how, that, that same question that came up from staff in the site plan review came, popped into my head immediately, that, you know, this building is being used for this truckers in the storage yard.
Domenico Sando, showers will be used only for the personnel which will work in the shop or in the offices. So driver will not going to allow to, to go in the, any showers or anything like that in the, they'll, the connection between them and the, this facility is going to be the parking, repair, and the office which will manage them about work, dispatchers, accounting, and safety, all this stuff. But nothing related to any personal use.
And what, what efforts will you make to make sure that they don't do any vehicle maintenance or anything, changing oil on their trucks in the storage yard?
This, this option is not allowed, I mean, we'll verbally inform them, and also we'll have cameras surveillance which will monitorize this one. And also I'll have my personnel which will have to take care about this one. Because even the, the condition to work right there outside is not, working with the, with the trucking repair or something like that, you have to have special tools, special, especially in the SMI trucks, you have to have air, which is a high pressure air, so all this stuff. So working the staging area is not going to be possible first, and second, we're not going to allow that. We'll, we'll verify this all the time. It, it's, even it's not safe for the drivers to do that. I mean, it's a lot of.
Another question I have is diesel trucks have to warm up a lot in the winter. You know, it takes some time for them to warm up before they go on the road. And you're talking about forty-six spots, you know, and then I'm just wondering, you know, thinking about the noise of all these diesel trucks starting up early in the morning to the people in the area for the storage yard. If you can address that concern that they might have.
About this last period, mostly the trucks they're building with a smart park IPU or, or APU. That means they have a small engine, some of them with a battery, some of them with diesel, which keep, keeping one of the engines. First, second, the trucks, the, usually during the week, mostly like seventy percent of the parking spot, they are empty. So, and mostly in the weekend, they sometimes coming. And also the trucks right now, it's after two thousand nine, two thousand twelve, they are building with a DEF system, and that, that's helping to, I mean, even the trucks, they are not so noisy right now, and that with about pollution, they have a DEF system, which they filter the exhaust air. So I mean, with the pollution, with the noise, I mean, should, should it be any problems? Because like I said, it's, they have an APU system, and also they, they have this DEF systems.
Okay, my last question, in this letter in March, staff was concerned that the legal description might not be accurate for the petition, and want to make sure that this does not include the property zone E one on the northeast side of the parcel, was that addressed?
Elizabeth Piffner, for the record, I did briefly discuss that at that meeting. I confirmed with Art Founder Stop, and that it does not in fact include the E one, it is strictly all the B three property, none of the E one.
Okay. All right, you have one question, and then we're going to take a five-minute break. Ms. Gardner?
My question is, for the storage of these trucks, how do you charge for that?
Domenico Sando, for, for the storage of the trucks, usually, like I said, if it's our company, so it's clear about this. But if it's any drivers living around, they usually they pay monthly.
Monthly?
Monthly.
But they're only allowed to stay for, what is it, like a monthly retainer to?
For example, is a truck driver which living, let's say in Marengo. So he's, he's working usually on the road. Some of them, they're going weekly, some, some of them going for a couple weeks, some of them can go for a month. So, but doesn't matter how often they are home, they just, let's say rented that, that parking spot.
So they're retaining that spot with a monthly fee?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, I understand that, thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Before we start with questions from staff and the public, I'm just going to say that we have to be out of this building by four thirty. And we won't be voting on this today because we have requirements for new site plan. And so I'll be, I'll be continuing this hearing to a, a new date as of like quarter after four. So I don't know if we even want to look at a date right now as to when we would continue it to.
So for the record, Anna Kurtzman, senior planner, we do have three dates that staff has told me are available. October the twenty-third will be the first available one.
I am unavailable.
Okay. October the thirtieth?
I'm not available.
Okay. November the sixth?
That's a green light for me.
I'm okay.
Elizabeth Fittner for the record.
November sixth. You said this good?
That works for Elizabeth Fittner. I'm just waiting to hear from Jim.
Oh, yeah, I'm not important.
Okay, so just for the record then, this will be continued then to November sixth to finish and probably vote.
At the same time? Correct?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll start with questions from staff.
Certainly, okay. Again, Anna Kurtzman, senior planner. So at the start of the meeting, Mr. Condon gave me a flash drive that had, I'm not seeing it on your screen, I see it on my screen. A site plan that we showed earlier today. Want to make certain that that is being formally introduced into the record as testimony?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. That was the only clerical thing I want to take care of.
Okay. All right. So now we'll move on to questions on behalf of the public. Anybody that would like to ask a question, I'll just use the timer on my phone for your three minutes. And I'll go ahead, sir, if you want to come up here so we can hear you well and identify yourself and your address, and you can.
Ron Schroeder with Schroeder asphalt, I'm just to the south there. I see the retention pond is right next to my building. My question is, there's twenty, twenty-five feet variance from Church Road to my building. What's going to happen to all this water? Is my property going to flood out? My septic system is right along the edge for the county had to put it in. And if you get a lot of rain, that retention pond is going to be in my property. Also, what about mosquitoes and everything else, you know?
Well, can you, can you address, you know, I guess we'll have to address one question at a time.
Jim Condon. The drainage, when it leaves our site directly out in front of the property, there's existing covert under Route twenty that this will drain to and continue just the way it drains now.
Okay, 'cause.
So that's the drainage issue of it.
Okay, so that retention pond area will be pretty dry then?
Well, the basin, other than the bottom foot of water, let's say, the basin itself will, it'll, it'll fill up and it'll drain down, just like every detention basin does. And when it drains out of the site, when it leaves the site, it'll drain under Route twenty the way the natural drainage occurs now and heads south and west.
And you get a lot of rain, that'll handle it.
It's designed.
I've seen that area flood. I've been out there twenty-five years.
Yep. Absolutely, I understand. Two things. One, that will be reviewed by McHenry County Stormwater Staff to make sure that it complies, number one. Number two, it is designed for, again, Jim Condon, I should have said that probably, it is designed for all the way up to the hundred-year event.
Okay.
So, and then a hundred-year event, a twenty-four-hour, a hundred-year event, and if I recall correctly, that's a twelve, twelve, over a twelve-inch rainfall.
Okay.
And we are able to hold that water and release it at the rate of what would be less than a two-year storm type of thing.
All good. Should it not work as it's supposed to, when I flood out, who's liable?
I don't, I don't know. I should not say that.
That's a fair question though.
Who is liable?
Yeah.
The guy that stamps it.
So we'd have to go after you then?
Yes, but I can tell you I've been doing it since.
I, I hope you're right.
Got it. Yes, I'll leave it at that, yeah. Absolutely. The person that designs it is responsible for the stormwater.
Thank you.
If it fails.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cindy Rathkind. I'm a Coral Township trustee. Thank you so much for the presentation and for all your questions. I just have a couple of questions. I'm mostly concerned about traffic and, and safety. So I know that IDOT requires a traffic impact study for a new development that expect, is expected to generate, I think it's over a hundred new inbound or outbound trips during peak hours. So it sounds like you guys are going to be close to that with fifty or sixty trucks maybe coming in on a Friday night, and then the staff leaving, and truck, you know, people leaving in their personal cars. So I know also that the developer is responsible for conducting and preparing a traffic impact study. So I'm wondering if there's been a traffic impact study prepared and submitted to IDOT to review on this development? Or will there be?
I, IDOT to this day, based on the information that's been supplied to them, which is the site plan, the, the use of the property, and the geometry entrance proposed, has not at this point required a traffic study. Our consultants, WT Group routinely does this type of work. At this point, does not believe a traffic study is required because the volume that this generates does not require it.
Okay.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah.
If we get further along to where we get to the permitting process, and IDOT sees it necessary, guess what we'll be doing? We will, I don't know if that's a terrible way to say it, we will be doing a traffic study at that time if it's required.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that you explained that you submitted the geometry site by WT to IDOT. I just don't know if they've heard everything about the sixty trucks coming in between five and seven PM on a Friday night, the sixty employees leaving, you know, that's really specific information, so.
For, for correction though, I don't believe it's sixty employees. I think it was twenty-five employees.
Okay, yeah.
Maximum thirty-five, I think.
It's true. Different numbers have been discussed.
Right, absolutely. And they don't all come at the same exact time, so.
Okay. So I looked at the light study, and I thought that was great that you guys put together the light study. It looks really good. There was one place I was concerned about, and I wanted to know if you were aware, are you aware that right at the entrance, the, I think the light exceeds the foot candles per the UDO. It's not exceed zero point five foot candles at the emitter property line, and it looks like it's between one point oh and one point one. So will you be looking at that and potentially, I've heard questions about dimming, or maybe angling lights, or doing different things at the entrance to make sure we're meeting, you're meeting that?
Jim Condon, again, this will go through the review process for the site plan, and if we miss an area like you mentioned, staff will be commenting on that, and we will make the appropriate adjustments.
Okay. On the picture, it looks like there's a, and I think you said there's a right deceleration, slowing lane. Is that a full lane that the truck can, trucks can pull into then to slow down? Like a turn lane?
It is. There is a taper, and then a full width lane.
Great.
For it to be off the road and decelerate before it starts making that turn, turning movement.
And how long, how long is that full lane? Do you happen to know?
Can we go to, we supplied the geometry. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah. And I'm not sure how long a, a, a truck is. I guess I'm curious how many trucks could, you know, could fit in there too.
Want to be on this one? Just for the record, I'm letting you go over it because you represent a trustee, and you'll have questions after pretending else, so go ahead.
Just the next page.
Thank you.
Right there. I believe the stacking right there, the taper, if I'm reading it right, is a hundred and eighty feet. The stacking of the truck before the start of the turn is another hundred feet, and then you have the turn in there. So between the stacking of the truck, the stalls that we create are eighty feet long? Yeah.
Okay.
Eighty feet long?
Dmitry, so the trucks usually they are seventy-five feet long, seventy-five to seventy-eight feet long.
Okay, thank you.
A truck width trailer.
Okay. So it sounds like there's a hundred and eighty feet on the taper, and then another hundred feet where they can stack, so, okay.
And in addition to that, Jim Condon, again, in addition to that, you have the trucks as they come into that turning radius, that's probably a whole nother fi, hundred feet of, so you're talking about one, two, three, up to four, plus another one coming in there? You're talking five trucks.
Okay, cool.
Probably four to five trucks can fit from the end of the taper to the full, at the full width, all the way in.
Okay, good. Thank you. And will any of the following activities be allowed at the site? Fueling, food service, maintenance beyond minor repairs, extended idling, or any long-term lodging? And I think you answered this, that truckers won't be staying in their trucks overnight or multiple nights.
So Elizabeth Fittner for the record, none of those items are going to happen. The minor repairs, obviously, it, a semi-truck facility is considered a major repair shop, so what are you meaning by minors? I guess my question, are you talking just oil changing, or, I mean, it could be engine rebuilds, things like that?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to get at how long, you know, but that's, it sounds like that's more about your, your primary use anyway, so maybe that's not even a good question. I was initially trying to get at how long might the trucks be there, but I'm going to just pull that one back because you already have that in your business. And then would it be possible to modify the landscape plan to include more trees along the berm in front of the storage area along Route twenty instead of only grass?
Elizabeth Fittner on behalf of the client again. If the county requires it, then I'm sure my client is more than willing to accommodate, but right now it needs all of the standards for the UDO.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry for the extra time.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a statement.
Oh, a statement is later.
Oh, later.
Right now it's questions.
I have a question. My name is Keith Kapocius. My address is one seven three oh five Cobblestone Bend in Marengo. And what I would ask about specifically is there, can there be signs put up for engine braking prior to the entrance to the facility?
Jim Condon, our response to that is any signage outside of our property within the right of way that would dictate that is completely one hundred percent under the control of IDOT, and we don't have any jurisdiction there. So I suspect requests could be made to IDOT for such things, and they may put them up. We've seen some of the, and perhaps that was a comment, we've seen some of the comments sent to the county.
Yeah.
We discussed it yesterday in our preparation for the hearing, and we were actually talking about, but it doesn't do much good when you're leaving the site.
Right.
Engine braking.
Sure.
But we would, we were planned on adding some signs to let the regular drivers in and out of here know that engine braking is not allowed as you approach the site. Is that accurate?
Dmitry Sandu, also I can add what during this, this distance, usually the engine brake is used when you go to downhill. Something along downhill, you just help the truck not to overheat the brakes. But here we have a short portion to stop and to go inside, usually mostly is practically is, is not too much possible to use the engine brake right there.
The next question would be in regards to the employees that would be coming in and out of the facility. Just south of you, there's a, a business fusion volleyball, and what we see, which becomes a great road hazard, is they just have a right turn in and a right out, but people will do the right turn out and do an immediate U-turn in front of oncoming traffic. Hampshire Road has resolved that by putting a median, actually a cement curb, I'm calling it a median, about two feet wide in the middle of Hampshire Road at their right turn right in, that actually prevents a car from, from, from doing that in that location. I know this is an IDOT thing from what you already said, but I would, I think we would really like something like that to make our road safer. And that is high-speed traffic there. The speed limit is fifty-five in front of our subdivision.
I can only tell you that IDOT dictates whatever improvement, Jim Condon, IDOT dictates whatever improvements we have to be made, that we would make there. I will tell you that the curve in that location with the fifty-five miles an hour, I don't believe is a normal practice in a medium like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Yes, ma'am. Anna?
Hi, Donna Consalo, seventeen four one three Fieldstone. The, the question is the noise. You know, trucks idling, you say they're not going to be idling, they're not loud, but the air braking is. Reefer trailers, you know, for refrigeration, they're going to be running all night, they have to. What can we do with the noise? Can we build berms in front of the storage area to help with the noise? Because when we bought our houses, we had, it was supposed to be a states all around us. Then during the course of.
That's a statement. You have to ask your question.
Okay, but this, this is why I'm asking the question.
But you just asked the question.
So it's not mandatory, maybe by IDOT or law or whatever, but being a good neighbor to the rest of us that are there. So that's one question. We have a left-hand turn into our subdivision coming, you know, is it north? South off of, and there's a hill that comes down, it's going to be going into the tire.
What's your question against it?
Are we going to be in any kind of scary situation if they're lined up going into his subdiv, into his truck place, and they come over into our left-hand lane and hit us? Because drivers are crazy. Is there any way that IDOT can be forced into widening that area? So can anybody answer those questions, or is?
Well, it's a, it's a question for the petition.
Jim Condon.
Yeah.
IDOT does not feel that that's a necessity at this time.
Okay. How many deaths have to happen to make it IDOT's?
I would tell you that is not my expertise.
Okay. That's all. Thank you so much.
Sure. Anyone else have a question? Did anyone not get, I mean, sir, you, your questions were all asked, or now if you have another one, now would be your opportunity. I'll allow you more time.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Keith, Keith Kapocius, one seven three oh five Cobblestone Bend.
For, excuse me, Anna Kurtzman for the record. The recording mics are up here, so could you please come forward? Thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry. And I know there was a lot of discussion about the lighting, okay? And, and we already, our subdivision is impacted by the lighting at the truck facility that's just south of our subdivision. It almost, it borders it actually, I think, at one point. And would there be, I'm making a request slash question, can the lighting be lowered after ten o'clock? Whatever lighting is going to exist on the, at the facility. I mean, I, I know we already talked about the downlighting and, and not super bright light a sales car dealership and all that, but if, if just anything can be done to just reduce the brightness at the, at those hours? That's my question.
Jim Condon, I would tell you that based on the feedback and the information that we've had, and the opportunity to have some time before our next meeting, we will be visiting with the lighting consultants to further discuss opportunities to dim and timing and things like that, and come back with a more specific, you know, like everything else, you learn as you go.
Right.
Specific projects, and so we'll be coming back with that, along with some of the other minor modifications that were discussed. We'll have some feedback on that.
Super. And then my last one is a clarification from what I've heard, and if I understand this, your right turn out on is the intention. These trucks are going to go north to the Union Coral Marengo Roundabout, which is the first roundabout after the Harmony Road. And then that's where they're going to, going to do their U-turn essentially, and then come south on ninety, I'm sorry, towards ninety.
Elizabeth Fittner and Jim might want to chime in as well. That is the intent my client has indicated, that he's going to put directional signs basically.
Yeah.
Encouraging.
Right.
That that's where they go. Encouraging that that's where they go, I believe from IDOT's understanding that is also where they're reporting to go.
Just to stay on the more popular routes, okay, thank you.
Sue Ryman, 17210 Cobblestone Bend, I have a question about hours of operation. I know you hit on it, but it was kind of not exact. Are you working Monday through Friday and then Saturday, all day, half-day, you mentioned both? And Sunday, what happens?
Dumetro Sanduk, usually hours of operation is Monday to Friday, 6:00 AM till 6:00, 7:00 PM. And Saturday by 2:00, 5:00 PM, 7:00 AM by 2:00. No, storage yard.
This is regarding the storage yard?
Storage yard, I mean, it's gonna be, usually, like I said, mostly will be 24/7. Because the drivers, the drivers, they have an hour of driving, so you cannot limit them to come inside at this time or at that time, so usually for the storage yard it's gonna be 24/7. And there'll be access for the, mostly for the drivers which have a parking rented right there or working for the company and they have a parking right there, not for outside customers.
I see, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? And we'll move on to testimony from the public, starting with the staff, Anna Kurtzman.
Anna Kurtzman, Senior Planner, I'm certainly prepared to give a presentation. However, I'm wondering if you want to postpone that until we get the rest of the testimony from the applicant as you have requested additional information.
I think that would be wise, yes. So we'll delay your report until we get the new site plan. All right, at this time, if there's any member of the public that would like to make a statement?
Again, I would-
Maybe we should wait?
I would make that recommendation.
Okay, all right, so at this time, we will continue this hearing at this point to the date stated November 6th. And we'll get new testimony from the applicant with the new site plan. And at that time then later, you'll be able to make your statements as well.
Thank you.
So I heard the date.
At 1:30 PM in this same room.
Thank you so much.
Did I cover all the bases?
You did.
All right, very good, so at this time this meeting is continued.